To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Folks, we can send agenda, sir.
All right, I make a recommendation to the board, items A, B, C, D, and E for their consideration.
Motion approved, city second, all in favor?
Five votes, sir.
Item for consideration, for consideration and ask about the trustee's personal.
All right, this is May and I are recommending Abby Carr for the position of Mitchell Junior High School art teacher. Dr. Comer and I are recommending Kevin Kling for the position of Mitchell High School Latin courses and other courses to be determined once Dr. Barnes in and can get his bearings and see what's needed and as we have more possible resignations, see what positions need to be filled by Coach Kling. Mrs. May and I are recommending Jessica Downey and Sarah Reynolds for the position of virtual teachers for next school year. We are reducing virtual teachers by half from what we had last year just due to enrollment numbers. I feel like two teachers can cover that at the junior high school for next school year. Mr. Pritchett and I are recommending Ada Reynolds and Patty Phelps for the high school virtual teacher and virtual support staff for next school year. Mr. Smoot and I are recommending Charles Neil Cox for the position of Mitchell Junior High School Class C night shift custodian. Dr. Daxter and I are recommending Sarah Horton for the position of Mitchell High School Special Education Life Skills Classroom Aid. Mrs. May and I are recommending Victoria Sesna for the position of Mitchell Junior High School Special Education Life Skills Classroom Aid. Mrs. Gilbert and I are recommending Bonnie Johnson for the position of Burris Elementary Special Education Multicat Classroom Aid. Mrs. Gilbert and I are recommending Tim Earl for the position of Burris Elementary Daily Substitute next year and that will allow our remediation and enrichment plans to continue in the amount of positions filled by our regular substitute pool. Dr. Grissom and I are recommending the granting of a leave of absence from Octo- or sorry, August 2nd through November 1st for Shelby Cole. She'll be doing her student teaching for both elementary education and special education during that time, so we'll find a temporary replacement for her position as Hatfield Elementary Special Education Multicat Classroom Aid. And then, Mr. Wagner, Mrs. May and I are recommending the following slate of extracurricular athletic positions. Mackenzie Arthur for publications at the junior high school. Brittany Crosby and Ally Waldrich as high school dance volunteers. Erica Slaughter, dance team sponsor for junior high school. Caitlin Nicely, junior high dance volunteer. Krista McDonald, assistant varsity volleyball. Jessica Allen, eighth grade volleyball. Lexi Connerly and Jim Allen as volleyball volunteers. Macy Robbins as assistant varsity basketball coach for girls. Carrie Eisen, fifth, sixth girls basketball. Allison Kern, seventh grade girls basketball. Zach Kern, eighth grade girls basketball. Shelby Cole, Alicia Wilson and Carrie Wilder as girls basketball volunteers and Joel Parsons as a junior high soccer volunteer. Please note on your original packet that Scott Saunders and Michelle Zaire, they will be included in the July 2022 list. This change is to simply give the board more time to discuss the possibility of multi-year contracts for these two varsity level coaches. And then a few transfers to make you aware of. Shania Harpstright will be moving from junior high art teacher to the Hatfield and Burris Elementary K through five art teacher. Lori Taylor will move from Hatfield Elementary Multicat Special Education Aid to Mitchell High School Special Education Aid with Mrs. Reynolds and Mrs. Dolphin. And then Stacy Rayhill from Burris Elementary Special Education Inclusion Aid to Burris Classroom Aid for next school year.
City makes motion, city seconds, all in favor? Five votes?
All right, thank you, Jessica. Item B, recommendation to accept the fuel bid for period of July 1 of 2022 through June 30th of 2023. That was in your packet. You did receive one bid and that was from Premier.
Item makes motion, city seconds, all in favor? Five votes?
Item C.
Item C, a recommendation to approve one-year extension of the current administrative, administrative contract of the MHS Dean of Students. That was not added to previous month's list of other administrators. That was simply a clerical error on my part. I do apologize for leaving that off, but I want to make sure that that position does get the contract extension.
City makes motion, city seconds, all in favor? Five votes? Item D.
To approve the 2022-2023 MCS textbook fees. Those were included in the packet. A special note, any increases, a large majority of that is due to just, it is that textbook cycle period of getting new textbooks, which is a common thing in the school world that we do go through that. So that's, that was any kind of increases that would be subject to that.
Item makes motion approved, city seconds, all in favor?
Item B, recommendation to approve the 2022-2023 MCS list of fundraisers. Those were also included in your packet as well.
Motion approved, city seconds, all in favor? Five votes?
All right, item, item F, recommendation to approve the MCS Educator Professional Growth Evaluation Plan and because she has let that work with the whole group plan, I'm gonna allow Ms. Jones to kind of get a little bit narrative of that for you.
Yeah, just a few highlights. First of all, I can't say enough about what an honor it was to work with a group of thirteen K through twelve teachers and administrators that actually applied to be part of that committee. So they were truly passionate about taking our twelve-year-old evaluation plan and trying to make something new and different. We sent out some surveys and went through that data to really get some feedback from our educators on what is most meaningful to them as they continue to professionally grow and grow as organizations. And we did a lot of research on what our best practice is when you're trying to grow personally as a professional and as a collective school organization. So we, of course, had to have the traditional rubric for best instructional practices for state guidelines. But one thing that was very evident from survey results was teachers' desire to have more consistent feedback from their administrators and instructional coaches. And so we have four observations throughout the year as opposed to one per semester. So we're excited to have those additional feedback and coaching cycles from administrators with instructional coaches not evaluating but supporting those growth goals. And then the new component is all educators will have a personal professional growth goal and plan that is set collaboratively with their evaluator. That includes our principals, myself. We've already set our goals for next year with Dr. Comer. And that will really allow our evaluators to consistently check in on those personal goals throughout the year. And that includes requirements for facilitated collaboration with colleagues, so really trying to bring us together as a collective unit. And that's what research says anytime the growth happens most when we have true educators, when they can become deeply connected as a collective unit to our common practices and to what's going on in buildings and classrooms and we have a true understanding of each other through that relationship building and working collaboratively on different projects like for field mapping on the assessment, instructional practices, things like that. But this really, this new plan really puts at the forefront just that personal professional growth. And really what we wanted to kind of create was something that says, hey, we, no matter where we're at in our profession, we can always continue to evolve and grow and do better for our kids. So whether you're a year one teacher or you're a year four teacher, we can continue to improve. So that's what we're going for. And like I said, next step will be to submit this to the state to make sure they approve everything we're doing, but this team really put their minds together and started with a blank canvas and came up with something new and exciting and innovative. So I'm very, very proud of them.
I have a question.
Yes?
So with this, do, do you start first-year teachers coming in with, with what the expectations are according to this plan? Will you go over that with your first-year teachers? And then how often during the school year or during the year will it be, you know?
Yes, that's a great question. I've, last year I did some new employee onboarding for brand-new teachers and new-to-MCS teachers. So that will be an opportunity to go over that. This group would like to stay together to continue to tweak the plan because we doubt we got it perfect on try number one. But our next little project is to do more of a formal new teacher induction program with this. We also embedded extra resources for brand-new teachers with, goodness, I think if you saw the end of the thirty-one-page plan, there's like thirty pages of actual strategies ranging from elementary strategies to middle school to high school strategies that can help them to meet each of the indicators. We also have our instructional coaches that will definitely help the brand, brand-new teachers to get allocated to the evaluation plan.
And how often then are, are the teachers evaluated normally? Is that scheduled?
So formal observations will have four times throughout the year, so two first quarter and two second quarter. Our previous plan had one per semester.
Thank you.
I think especially on the two, kudos to, just mentioned the thirteen teachers, administrators who worked on that. None of those were appointed. They all filled out an application process and applied to be part of that group. So we had principals represented, every building was represented, MEA was represented on that group. So it wasn't, it wasn't the old school, just so much the school's gotta do it. These are people that wanted to be part of that process, the application process. That was in, and that can be said, Jess's leadership and, and work in that group is tremendously responsible for the good work that you guys are bugging on tonight.
And I'll note, Dr. Daxter had a huge voice for our special education department. A lot of their roles and responsibilities and things that they should be evaluated on are a lot different than Gen Ed. And so I think she has six or seven different rubrics she can use to evaluate case conference coordinators, speech-language pathologists, pre-K teachers. Just teachers that don't, don't fit the general education requirements remote.
All right, recommendation, recommendation to approve list of obsolete or destroyed equipment. I believe that list comprises of one item that was an out-of-date and unfixable special needs piece of equipment. And then the majority of that is surplus is gonna come from the demolition of the baseball and softball areas as well. H, disposition of recommendation to approve the North Horn's Career Center Area Career Technical Education Program Operating Agreement between that entity and Mitchell Community Schools. That will be for a calendar year. That's a, that's an annual June process that we go through. Item I, recommendation to approve a revision to the 22-23 MCS school calendar that you had already approved back in December or January. One, the reason for, that was included in your packet, the revised recommendation. That stems from after Mitchell Community Schools and pretty much every other school system in the state of Indiana had approved their school calendars. The state of Indiana issued some guidelines of what could be considered for e-learning days and what could not. So the revision that we're asking for, there is not a change to the start date or end date to the school year. There is no alterations to either fall break, Christmas break, or spring break as well. The recommendation for revision comes from, we had two PD slash e-learning days, spring semester or fall semester, and we had two in the spring semester. The revision shows that we are keeping the two in the fall, but the two in the spring are gonna be in-person learning. And then with some additional May 5th and I think Good Friday, and there was another that they're still scheduled to be off, but we still do retain the possibility. Those could be snow makeup days if we needed to on those days. That would hopefully keep us from having to tack on days at the end of the school year, which in our case, that really affects, that could greatly affect graduation and some other things too. So that gives us some breathing room in there too, but that's, that's the core of the revisions. Mr. Shaw. All right, Mr. Lynch, since you're here, we'll just go, since you're on the agenda first, we'll just let you go first.
All right.
Good to see you, Mr. Lynch.
Walked in just at the right, right time. Let's see, talking to the field turf, I'll just start there because I've talked to them most today. They should be done laying the perimeter pipe and the nailer for the turf this week. Put down the geotextile fabric next week, start putting stone in next week. We anticipate doing a punch list on the football field no later than July 22nd. That's giving about a week of full-time corporate count on weather, but it looks like at least for the next ten days, it's gonna be pretty hot and dry on it. So with that, concession should follow there shortly after. I think they're in good shape there. I just, I don't have a, a delivery date right now ahead of when they're expecting the cabinetry to come in, but they're gonna start tearing out the concrete and asphalt back there, start pouring up to the plaza that goes back there. And then I haven't been over there.
Have they started, they haven't started demo on the football field or the baseball and softball field yet?
No. That's probably, that's probably next week based on my last conversation. They'll start that there. So we anticipate the football field, everything being wrapped up there. Like I said, doing punch list July 22nd. The only thing that will not be complete will be the track surface on the new D-zone. Could develop that asphalt cure out a little bit. And we had a little challenging time finding a company that could do it this year. So it's probably gonna be the fall as long as, now I'm talking to, to Dr. Comer and everybody, as long as it's done for next track season, we'll be in good shape on that. Fieldhouse is coming up with foundations coming up out of the ground. Should be starting slab prep to get ready for slab. Our last meeting, we talked about steel and steel is coming, starting to arrive mid-August?
Second week of August.
Second, third week of August. They'll start shipping steel in. There's gonna be four sequences to that there. So right now, there's, for the next two months, the progress rates are gonna be, we're laying more block on that job there. On the maintenance building, the cup, the group that is doing the drainage on the football field is looking to either cement stabilize that even late this week or first to next week, coordinating that with Benny right now. So once they get that cement stabilized, they'll be able to take off on that job there. I don't think there's anything really that's come up.
HVAC.
HVAC project bids a week from this Thursday.
Yeah, I know we pushed it back.
Yeah, we pushed it back there to make sure that we have on all bidders, but it's been so week from Thursday.
We're still looking at any age, whatever the winning bid is for the HVAC, we're still looking at doing
Summer.
Next summer would be the HVAC project.
Right, we need to do that, you know, chillers right now are thirty-four weeks out. So I gotta get a bid and get under contract and start procuring the materials for that. So there's nothing else I can really think of from those projects. Look forward to seeing how they go in the next two weeks, even though it's gonna be hot, like hot and dry.
Yeah. Progress is moving big time. If you haven't had a chance to see what's going on, you may not want to ignore it because it is blistering hot, but.
We do meet every other Wednesday on it, so next meeting will be a week from this Wednesday at eight-thirty in the morning. So if you're gonna come by and visit the site, for, for sure here those days.
I just walked a few minutes before the board meeting. It was full of time. I saw Amos and Coach Kling.
I hope to, but I came from Kentucky to here and I was pushing it to here in time.
Football field's taking shape. I mean, it's, it's happening quick.
Also this week, they got to put in the underground electrical off that goes on the football field and the water connections. So I gotta get those done once they get the rock put in.
Excellent. Mr. Wagner, is, is baseball and softball coaches got everything out of that area that they need to get out, or is that still a process?
Still a process. Concession stand needs some clearing out. I think baseball cleared most of their stuff today, but the concession stand areas are the ones that will be cleared out now.
Okay, good. Make sure we let them know.
Anybody sent Danny the contact or North Gibson that was interested in the bleachers?
Okay.
Price those out, get them out.
Excellent. Okay, guys, George is here. Any questions or clarification or?
The maintenance completion, when will that be? So we'll see, starting with demo and what we're looking at.
Doors, starting that. Probably, right now, it's probably gonna be October.
And then are we planning fall demo on this? So that'll be done with bad weather.
Yeah.
And then the, the initial thing for you and your projects is to have that at least seated and keep that down on the sidewalk. Do that after that.
Yeah, yeah. We're just trying to take it down, turn it into green space right now.
Okay.
Which one?
Well, the building.
It, it should, it should follow shortly. The only thing I don't know out there is when the casework's coming. Because it's got stainless steel countertops and cabinetry in there and I've, I've been back. I asked that at the last meeting and I didn't get an answer on when the delivery was on that. This week they should be over there putting the roof steel up and getting the decking on, getting ready to roof it. And after that, it's all pretty much outside work and hanging doors.
Mr. Wagner, thank you.
Not a problem.
Thank you. As always, you're welcome to stay, but I know you got a little dark home too.
My wife does like to see me on occasion. Not, not for very long, but on occasion.
I understand. Make sure you keep that going. All right, thanks, George, very much. All right, Mr. Wagner, let's keep going on the list. Athletic updates.
Yeah, so athletic updates that we will address this year. Since I'm going into my second year, we wanted to really touch base on the overall goals of our athletic program. The goals that we have in sight for our athletic program are real simple. One hundred percent academic eligible, develop programs, not just teams. With that being said, it's, it's be involved, be present, be seen. And that's what I want all of our coaches to understand. Win all home games, which is a big one for us because we want to protect what we have here. And then obviously, win the PLAC, win sectionals, and advance farther. With the PLAC and the sectionals, we're gonna start looking at enhancing our, our schedules to prepare us for those tournaments. That way, where we were at a few years ago to where we're at now, we're not really challenging ourselves straight up the board. We need to start challenging ourselves again to become better for the tournament time.
And when you, sorry to interrupt you, Amos, but when, Mr. Wagner, when you do say that, you mean start scheduling non-conference opponents that would test us?
Yes. And then coaching contract extension checklist that we go over. So when I go through and I look at coaches, I look at foundation feeder systems. So feeder systems are K through twelve, correct? What are we doing in those K through twelve processes? Are we, are we hosting camps? Are we hosting, how many camps are we hosting? What kind of critiques are they taking? What overall camp, fifty-two weeks out of a year, how many camps are we hosting? How are we involved? How are we being seen? It goes in line with our goals, you know? I want all of my varsity coaches to be involved, to be seen and be present. If I walk any coach into Hatfield or Burris, I want every student in that place to walk up to him and know what coach they are and what they coach what sport. Because that means I know for a fact that those kids know who that coach is. And that is, that is the best thing we could possibly see. The other thing is support other teams, support other sports. The biggest thing is if we support them as coaches, then our athletes will support them as well. We've, we've got to be able, we don't want to show a divide. We want to be all in line. And then help change the culture and mentality of Mitchell Athletics. We can compete. We will compete. And then help make our student athletes better people. It doesn't matter what happens on a court or on a field. As soon as you walk off of it, that's where you become what you are, correct? Athletics is only helping you become who that person is, but as soon as you walk out in the real world, now we get to see who you really are. And I want my coaches to have a hand in that. And, and that's mentoring, that's helping them out, that's, you know, tutoring them, that's whatever it can be, whatever that kid needs, we need to help them. And then I've got packets for all of you guys with all this information. There's some, some of our BSN information on here as well. That way, the touch points of the, the agreement that we did with them and then.
I, I just have a couple things before we turn it over to the board, obviously. How are, I'm not looking for a specific to the exact number. How's summer participation been in our camps and programs so far?
So basketball camp-wise, seventh and eighth grade, I think he was around fourteen or fifteen. Most of those kids are in travel baseball that, once you get to that level and you're practically, you're basically playing Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. His first through fourth grade group was around thirty-seven. His group today, I did not get in there to see what his group was today and I haven't talked to him. The girl's side, he did this.
I was in there. I'm guessing there was about twenty-four, twenty-five kids.
Correct. The girl's side, so for the past two weeks, he has held his junior high camp with the girls and they've been sitting roughly on average about twenty or twenty-one kids. So morning workouts, so we devised, the morning workout plan starts at seven AM. They work out from seven AM to nine. Then basketball goes after that and we're sitting around forty-seven kids coming in on average.
Is that up from last year? Is that up quite a bit from last year or is it about only one or do you know?
That, um, this year to last year is a little bit different because last year they, they only really worked out, they worked out basketball in the mornings and then they worked out football in the evenings. So now it is athletes. It isn't just one or two teams. It's everybody together. But I'd say the number this year, especially for seven AM in the summertime, I'd, I'd say it's a, it's, it's a very good number we have. Comparable to last year, I'd say we're probably a little more, if not right at the same, combining the two groups from, from last year.
And, and the way you do it this year is all coaches are in there together with all the athletes now.
Yep.
And not just specific football only, basketball, it's everybody together.
Yep. Encouraging it. I mean, we do, strength, agility, and stretching. It's, we give it all in the, an hour and a half, two hours.
Good.
Can I ask a question? I saw that it was listed that middle school football was going to start this week with some strength training. Is that only for football players? Is that the same thing as athletes only?
That, that lifting regiment is, Coach Kling is teaching the football players because Coach Jackson Ryan goes straight in, as soon as his weight session's over, he goes straight into his practice time.
Okay.
So I'm sure he'd be more than happy to have any athlete come in.
Okay.
He'll work with absolutely any athlete that comes in, but he, he definitely put it out there for the junior high football. That way he can start getting his face with those kids.
And my other thing, could you, and I know you've got a packet for the board to give and to look at. Can you just give kind of the overall, what was so attractive about the BSN agreement that we went into with that? And, and just, just a real quick elevator speech, so you don't have to run it out in the board to read it.
Okay, so BSN, we were able to partner with BSN. The best thing about BSN is they're a, basically a billion-dollar-backed company, correct? So when we call BSN or we call, let's just throw Dunham's out as an example. I could call BSN for basketballs. I could call Dunham's in for basketballs. BSN's gonna be able to get them more available than what Dunham's will because of their backing and their sheer size. Along with that, BSN gives us the option of a sideline store where Mitchell gear will be offered three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So it will be every day, twenty-four hours a day. You can go on, you can order and have it shipped directly through you. It isn't just a one slot window that you have to order during that time for it to come in. The other part of it is, is that every process that we go through, there's reward deals that come back to us. So it actually makes our uniforms for our teams cheaper. It makes our shoes for our teams cheaper. We're able to get footballs, basketballs, volleyballs, all of that as a cheaper rate because we did partner with them. And then they've also given us, you know, branding, they gave us some money for a branding deal so we can start getting some signage and some rugs and we can get a media backdrop for our kids to take pictures and burn up on special occasions and, and we're able to do that kind of stuff. The one thing that they reiterated and that I was appreciative of is that local businesses are still open. You know, so if there is a sectional shirt or conference shirt or any kind of shirt that we want made during a season, we can absolutely go anywhere and have anything made. We, we are not, this is not a standalone partnership where we have to direct everything to them. This is just a way for us to get some money back from them and still be able to get them to produce the needs that we have.
Mr. Wagner, is the, I, I know, I think I saw that you sent me the beta version of what the sideline stores. Is that up and running yet, or are we?
It is not. I've got to have a couple meetings before we make it live, but it should be live by July 1st.
I will tell you, the beta version, or the beta version I saw, I was absolutely flabbergasted by the scope of Bet, oh, Bet. Strike that, Bill. Mitchell apparel that was on there from pullovers to sweatshirts to hats to, I, I mean, it was amazing, the scope of, of Mitchell gear that the fans or the kids could order. And the way I understand it, if I were a pullover, for example, a new Mitchell pullover, then it's almost like the Discover card. A portion of that will come back to Mitchell Athletics, right? That you can use then at your discretion.
Yep.
Okay.
And then with that, all the designs get changed quarterly. So every three months, all of those designs get changed, so you're not looking at the same options for 12 months out of a year. They constantly change every three months.
And do you have, do you have final word on those designs? Like if you see a design that you don't like or don't want, uh-uh, we're not doing that, we're not doing that sweatshirt or we're not doing that t-shirt or whatever?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Wagner, there's different brands within this.
Yes.
Yeah, so if I'm a football and I like Adidas shoes, and I'm a basketball and I want Nike shoes, or is it?
In a scenario, so their main brands that they deal with are Mitchell, are Under Armour and Nike, correct? And then they do, they do a lot of them, Adidas is farther down the line.
But sometimes culture, yeah, they want something a little more specific gear to their sport, okay.
Yep.
Tall sizes? Tall sizes?
Tall, big and tall sizes.
Yep, you better believe it.
It is the Robbie German size.
It's called the Robbie German Special.
All right, guys, any, any questions? Thank you.
So.
All right, last thing I have on the list, I appreciate Officer German being here. School Safety Committee continues to meet regularly. We did meet. We were pushed unfortunately to meet as soon as school was over, based on the events in Texas. The, the whole world's aware of that tragedy. But when those tragedies happen, we come together and discuss. It gives us an opportunity to discuss some things that we obviously know we need to do better. And unfortunately, school safety updates and focus, that will never not be on the forefront. I wish we could say we, it will someday go away, but I think we're all realistic enough to know that unfortunately, we're never going to have that opportunity to do that. Our big topic for the last meeting, and Officer German, you jump in here too if there's anything, since you're the chairman of that group to kind of respond to by saying something that you don't feel is accurate of the committee. Our biggest thing is, there's still things that obviously take a backseat to student safety. Academic sometimes takes a backseat to student safety. The big one that takes a backseat to student safety is our convenience. We can't have policies or anything else that are just simply more convenient if they're not the safest. Unfortunately, sometimes, it's not unfortunate, I want to take that back. If, if we're doing any policies or any recommendations, I am going to present some to you, start pondering over the next month of some policies. I'll, I'll just be transparent, there may, there may be some that see this as not as convenient for them. I'm unapologetic for that. That's not our intention, is to purposely make something less convenient for others. Our absolute intention is to make our schools as safe as we can possibly make it for the students and staff to work in those schools. So some things may be inconvenient for you guys if you sort of choose to move forward as parents and community members and board members. And some things are going to be more inconvenient for these staff members too. And that's just part of it, if it keeps it safe and sound. Some things that, just kind of reiterate, just to remind the board of your guys focused on school safety, and I can only speak from what I've been a part of. But this kind of started, I'm sure I'm probably leaving some things off. And Officer German, Jess, you serve on that committee as well, you can remind that. But I took some time over the weekend just to start brainstorming some things, just in my short three-year tenure with Mitchell Community Schools. And these are all things done just since I've been here, that the board has acted on to make the students and staff safer and the community of Mitchell safer. First, number of school safety specialists that were licensed within, by the state of Indiana. When I came here, there were two. There are now six that have went through the training, and that is ongoing training to keep that licensure going with plans to add to that every year of going. So we're up from two to six in, in three years. The call boxes, which are the push-button boxes to enter into the buildings. Just in the last year, all of those were within the, the, the reception or a holding area within the building. Those have been all moved to exterior to where you can't even get in the first set of the doors until you're called in to the office. Those, those were done. That was a huge update or upgrade to our safety. The camera systems out, all four campuses have been updated, which not only include inside the building, but also include the grounds and athletic facilities. Also, camera system's been updated. New intercom systems have been implemented and put in, AGS and NJHS with the plan over the next year to upgrade the high schools and Burris Elementary. And Burris has made go to the Smithsonian as a, I think they use that on the Andy Griffith Show, just the point of play. So that, that'll be upgraded. Protective window coverings have been installed at the front entryways of both elementary schools. And also at Burris, if you go by, you'll see there's a, there's now a, a reflective surface on those exterior windows that face that street that have been added to. There is definite plans to upgrade the junior high and the high school main entryways to where you can see out of those. And they look very school appropriate, and they look, they kind of spread schools, not kind of, they spread school spirit, but you can't see in those entryways as well. So that, that's been done. There was not an official MCS Community Schools Safety Committee that met regularly. Robbie's done a nice job of chairing that group. We do meet regularly now to update ourselves and to keep us involved in what's going on. Mandatory school safety training for all MCS employees continue to evolve. Unfortunately, one that we have set for, for all employees to take part of once school starts on those first couple of days when just staff are here and not students. We have someone from the state police come to do active shooter training with all employees, including non-certified, need to be part of that training as well. And lastly is that, that, and Robbie's been very instrumental in this, is the new key system, the, the keyless entry systems that we have now to where cards are issued. And Robbie's done a very nice job of kind of orchestrating that and monitoring that to where, getting away from so many keys floating around. I will just be very honest, that is a process trying to get all the keys back that, that were out there. And Mitchell is no different than a lot of places. Over time, there were a lot of keys that were, that were issued out. So we are absolutely going in the process of, once Robbie issues a key card, you don't get the key card until you give the old standard key back to Robbie and he categorize that. One of the great things about the keyless entry system we have now is that anytime, including the superintendents, their, their card can be disabled from Robbie from your phone, right, if you wanted to. That can be done instantly. We don't have to try to get that card back from someone, we don't have to try to track he or she down, it can be just terminated right then. It can also be set up, especially with our coaches during elementary basketball season, for example. Robbie can set it to where, as long as he's given a start date to that season and an end date to that season, those cards become defunct automatically based on the calendar that Robbie sets. So, so I just wanted to remind the board, we've got a lot of work to do as a district. I know I can't thank you all enough for being, if I hear it once, I hear it a lot about our school's safe, our students' safe, or is our, our staff's safe? And we will continue to do that, but what I want to remind everyone of, what you've already done in a short tenure of three years, and I want to thank you for what you guys have done too. You guys have made that a big priority and you not only, not only set it, but you've put the dollars behind it to make that happen too. So I appreciate that very, very much. So with that said, unless anybody has any questions about school safety, Mr. Shaw, I do have some first reading recommendations as well. They let the board have a minute to kind of ponder as well as far as these official safety policies. First one, all exterior doors at MCS will remain locked at all times. MCS interior classroom doors will remain locked while school is in session. The second, all MCS employees must display their school-issued ID while on school or district campus. All substitute teachers and visitors must register in the school's main office and display an office-issued identification while on the school's campus. Third, MCS will host school safety trainings determined by the MCS School Safety Committee and/or superintendent for all MCS employees. And lastly, car ride or pickup at both Hatfield and Burris Elementary Schools will begin after buses have left school campus at the end of the day. Vehicles used for car pickup will not be allowed on school campus until 3:05 PM at Hatfield Elementary and 3:10 PM at Burris Elementary. That last one, just to be transparent, we've got some logistics we need to continue to work out on that. Again, for transparency's sake, again, I'm not unapologetic if people see that one in particular as inconvenient to them. I do believe we have to do something to make things safer. It's hard, I'll just be honest, it's hard to monitor when there's that much going on at the end of the day to, to make sure we're keeping everyone safe. Not, not just, we want everyone safe, we want, including the people that are there to pick up the kids. We want them safe as well. And we feel like this is our best shot of really starting to have the opportunity to work out logistics. And, and what we kind of, I know both elementary principals, I spoke to them today, they're working things in their head already of how to logistically to make that happen. We totally, and I reassured the two principals especially, there's going to be a lot of this present when that starts to help, help with logistics of that. And what they come up with on day one of school is probably, is not what it's going to look like the second week of school, or maybe even the second month of school. We're going to have to evolve it and, and really work out the keys logistically, how that works, including personnel, who's going to monitor that and do some duties. But both principals are very confident, given time, they can do it. Dr. Grissom made the comment, he just kind of chuckled and said, all know what doesn't work when we actually run it. We'll see, see some things that don't work until we get bodies moving and cars moving, then we'll be able to kind of figure some more things out too. But, Mr. Shaw, I just wanted to kind of present those as a courtesy to the board for later, we're going to kind of have a minute to ponder those. And then my intention, after getting some feedback obviously from you guys, I would want to bring those to the July meeting in terms of a, a recommendation for official policy within our handbooks. Anything out from that?
Sounds good to me, couldn't have said it any better myself. And, and to all the board, you're, you're always more than welcome to call me anytime you need something or have a question, so. I'm always good about returning calls if I miss them, so.
Kudos to a group that. Kids and past kids, last Thursday was. There was like four of those girls there of that original group. High school kids that have waited out three years now to see something huge like that, kind of a mutation, so.
That's a long time coming.
And there was a, our building was there, there was probably, I think I counted all, there was 90 people there.
Huge crowd.
Huge.